Okay, thank you. We'll resume our meeting. We were in a special meeting with the town board in connection with Chapua Crossing. Is there a motion to come out of our special session of advice for council? Advice with council?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll resume our meeting and we'll go to our first item on this evening's agenda. That's the informal hearing for the pending application. That's the Watson and Goldstein application. Application for a subdivision amendment, lot line amendment, and waiver of jurisdiction, eighty-two and ninety Orchard Ridge Road. We would have been here last time and finished it, except that we had to wait for the thirty days for the county to basically nonappear so that we become lead agents and we have authorization to move this forward. As far as I understand, Bob, we don't have any issues or questions at all from the staff level on this?
No, no sir.
And I don't think there were any legal issues. I talked with Jennifer on this and so she was pretty straight up on it. We're ready to go. We have, it is, Sabrina, do we need to do anything in terms of secret on this? Or have we already done that? I can't recall.
Hang on.
Do we have to declare ourselves that a lead agent because...
Well, you already did.
Yeah, we haven't.
You already did. There was no comments received from the county. So you can, you have to make a declaration that there is no environmental impact.
Okay.
As part of your resolution. But you can do that prior to making the resolution to approve.
Okay. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And staff has prepared a resolution for us in connection with this re-subdivision and actually a waiver of jurisdiction, I believe. Do we need a motion for the waiver of jurisdiction?
We would, right?
Yeah. Do we have a motion to waive jurisdiction in connection with this application?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a resolution for approval of the re-subdivision. Any issues or questions?
Couple of people are listed as present. There's also a president who are not. Steve Coleman and Jennifer Gray are not here.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, good point. Anything else, anyone?
In the first where Ash, should there be commas between all those people's names? I know it's a little minor detail, but just wondering.
No details.
Page twenty-six? I mean, line twenty-six?
First page, yeah, page twenty-six. I don't know if that's...
That's how the thing reads. There are no commas on the plat.
Okay, just asking.
Good question, though. Why are they no commas on the plat?
Because it looks like one big name.
Groups your brother.
They may divide up people wrongly.
Okay.
You not only pay by the amount of line work on that plan, you pay by the letter.
Oh, each character is paying, I see.
Good point.
Okay. Any other questions or issues?
No.
Nope.
If not, is there a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Has amended.
Has amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry to keep you silly.
Tough crowd.
Tough crowd, yeah.
You'll be here later than us.
Nice of you to drop by. Come anytime.
You're welcome to stay.
Good to serve dinner.
What was how those other guys come back? Give me a voice.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we wanted you first to the agenda. We appreciate it.
Okay, we have our next item. This is an informal hearing for a new application. This is on the Kerry Holmes LLC formerly Bly application for integrated plot plan amendment for clearing and grading limit line amendment and tree removal permit approval and also a steep slope approval.
Yes, those are the two.
So here we are. We have some changes that you're proposing, right?
Correct.
Janice, should I have the flash drive? Should I use this video?
Yes. Is it on? Thank you. I got you, Kerry.
The little pointer, or should I just use the mouse?
Sure, if you can just...
Thank you. Okay, so...
Oh, that's right, because of the scrape, right?
No, it does. Sort of.
It doesn't work on color, I think.
No, they all work now.
Oh, look at that. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Yay!
Okay. So we go green or red? Is it, we go green, right?
Yeah, we go green, sure.
Okay, good evening, everyone. You guys had a long night.
Yes.
Definitely off the heels of Chapua Crossing. I don't know if I want to be here right now, but that's, hopefully you can get through this relatively quickly.
We hear that often.
So, we basically have a slight amendment that we're requesting to have done to the initial approved plan. We're requesting that the limits of disturbance and the grading limits be expanded somewhat. And the two predominant areas, actually, the one predominant area of the expansion of limits of disturbance is this area here around the cul-de-sac. Initially, the plan had been approved for a retaining wall around the actual cul-de-sac itself, but the way the field work was done and the construction was done, a good portion of this area here, there is no really any more slope that actually required a retaining wall at all. So part of allowing, requesting a reduction in the retaining wall would permit us then to install a smaller wall further down the slope of the outside of the cul-de-sac and then grade pursuant to standard code, which would be a two-on-one grade going down. So if you look, again, I'm sorry, I apologize for the point of being a little shaky there, but this outside perimeter now shows a smaller four-foot retaining wall, a fieldstone retaining wall versus a six-foot retaining wall that was, that covered the entire perimeter of this outside of the cul-de-sac here.
And that wall will be on the outside of that blue area?
It'll be on, it'll be right at the edge of this blue area.
It's actually inside the grading. They come down, for some reason, they come down with a two-on-one, they go the four-foot wall, then you have continuation of the two-in-one slope after the fact.
After the four-foot wall, correct. And the second part is, originally, if you look here, this straight line here originally was a retaining wall that we thought wouldn't be necessary, but again, field conditions, a lot of this rock that we hammered out and this ledge rock here was very friable and most of it just, just really came apart. So it was actually prudent to have this really just slope back, you know, one-on walk for this, the remaining of a piece of ledge rock that's still there and the rest of it to be two-on-one with topsoil and seed.
Are you finished with the rock crushing?
We, there may be one day or perhaps a day and a half, because we have a stockpile there that we don't know if we have to crush yet, because once we've finished this area here, we won't know exactly how much we have left. We may or may not, so we're not sure. So those are the two predominant changes. So all of this area has already been completed and has been completed actually for quite some time. It's seeded, it's stabilized. So all, quite honestly, it's this small area here and then this area as well is the other part of the request of the application is the, we have to remove three trees. On the planting plan, which I can bring up if you'd like, show seven trees, but three of them are in, four of them are in poor condition, two of them are slanting, one I think is dead, and one of the three that we are removing actually is rooted on rock itself, which, two other trees that had fallen with some storms right next to it, so I don't even know how long that's going to stand, so we just included that as part of the three that we're requesting to remove.
Did Steve weigh in yet on that?
He's, unfortunately, he's been out sick, so I would assume he'll be able to weigh in by the public hearing.
I had, I did meet with Steve in advance and we had walked through what we needed to do and, again, we'll confirm with him that there's no issue.
And I do have to say, the applicant has been very diligent in working with the town and kind of keeping us up to date. He is in the middle of construction and doing earthwork out there, so this is a change. And he came to us and we said you needed a change, so he's here, you know, kind of in the midst of his work to correct something that is actually a better idea.
Really, as I understand, a little bit sort of on the cusp between a field change and really...
Correct, and we're erring on the side because he is changing the clearing and grading limit line, that we do need to do a new plat because we do mark that line on the plan and that you do need to see it.
And Bob also determined that a steep slope application was required.
Correct, correct.
Plus new agreements as well.
Yeah, because it, because we're amending the clearing and grading limit line, it requires now changes to that previous agreement that we're set in.
Yeah, they have retaining wall agreements which they have to defend.
Yep.
And then they have new slope easements which they need to submit.
Right.
Which we would submit a new, we have that existing, we would modify that agreement.
Correct.
Right.
Now, you can either modify it or amend it.
Modify the...
Modify or abandon the old ones, whatever you want to do. I don't know.
Less of will work with you.
Well, I don't know what's easier, less. Either you abandon the old ones...
I have to refresh my recollection as to what already has been filed.
So, I think those are the main two changes. Obviously, we would like to request the ability to, given that, draft a resolution, have the conditions, meet the conditions. Obviously, this would be no different than town also inspecting the footings, the building of the wall and so forth as previously before, and perhaps we can continue so we can keep the project moving.
So we have to schedule a public hearing?
Correct.
And that, when do we meet? In February, the fifth?
The fifth.
Do we have enough time to notice?
Yes, yes.
Okay. But I mean, that's, we're jumping ahead, so Bob, did you have any issues or questions and...
Well, they, like David said, they're taking down one of the walls, but adding another one, and I don't want to oversimplify it that it's just a four-foot wall. It's holding up load from the roadway, it's holding up a two-in-one slope which gives it some surcharge, and if that wall's not properly designed, properly maintained and built properly, we're going to lose our dedicated roadway. So don't just, you know, you just say it's just a four-foot wall. There's a lot more design that I think, in my opinion, and looking at the plans that have to be done to make that, to beef up that wall, so I made it very clear that that wall will be looked at very closely to make certain that it's designed properly since it's holding up a town road.
Agreed. We obviously would, you know, build it accordingly to specs.
I have a funny feeling when the engineer sees my notes, he might bump up that design a bit. I don't know, at least to me, it seems a little bit skimpy.
Skimpy in height or thickness of foundation?
Everything.
The ballast at the bottom is...
The depth of the foundation, the width of the foundation.
Yeah.
You know, what type of...
You don't want overturning.
Concrete, right. And if that fails, that wall, there goes our roadway system, so it's critical, it's a critical wall.
Yeah, but it, it won't go that fast. They'll just have to be spending money to fix something that could have been done, you know, somewhat better to begin with because it would have been closed.
Well, maybe, not necessarily after dedication.
Yeah, well, it could be a problem. If that wall falls and fails in the next ten years and we accept dedication and the new property don't take it over and they don't maintain it, it's going to be a real problem for the commissioner to...
Well, do we have to, do we have to take over the...
That's, I would recommend when they do the slope easement, that the slope easement have a natural clause in there too as well for the homeowners to maintain the wall to the town, you know, to some sort of satisfactory level, and if not, the town could win there and have some sort of clause in there.
I like that.
I would highly recommend that. It's a critical wall.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, no one takes it too seriously until something happens and it fails, and then it's a big problem.
Yep, good point.
So that was number one. That's why I put it as number one. Number two is pretty much what I just went over. They're going to be the slope easements to take it, to take place over the continual easements that we're putting in. Number three, the slope easement, of course, that you should include language regarding maintenance of the four-foot wall, which I just went over. Also too, I'd recommend, so there's no confusion on where the limits of these easements go to, that your surveyor go out there and actually locate the physical limits of where they graded to when they're done and incorporate that into the easement so we know it encompasses everything. I'm not sure how you obtain these measurements. That's number four. Again, I mentioned this already, the previous, we can, the continual, maybe, three, but we're going to two and three should be abandoned to the satisfaction of town council, or if you want to amend them, I'd prefer the town council on that. I don't want to get in the middle of that. Number six, obviously, I look at the slope analysis based on the numbers that you have provided by Hudson Engineering. It does need the planning board approval. And I would, sheet numbers were two duplicates, C1, there were two C1s and two C2s, so I was trying to screen that out.
Okay, I think one was the original.
Yeah, I don't know, but there were two C1s and two C2s, so I would screen that out.
Bob, what was your sketch showing here?
That's for...
That sketch?
Housing.
That's for the...
Never mind.
One that was taken off. That was the water main extension.
Yep, never mind.
Right through the...
East Village.
Right through the Wedland.
Other application.
Other application.
Jumping way ahead.
I know you're excited to get that one.
You're not going to see them for a while.
Right. So those are my comments. And now I would think all the other stuff that's already, all the site improvements, the plans that were approved, because I know that's not a complete package. I used to think that was a resolution we'll reference, all those other ones, and I still have to be obliged by...
As the, from the original resolution, yes.
We'll take care of that in the resolution. Board smithing.
Yes.
And those are my comments.
Sabrina, anything?
The action is an unlisted action. The applicant did submit an EAF. We can do an uncoordinated review. We are the only agency weighing in on this project. In Bob's memo, he did indicate that a steep slopes permit fee would be required. We actually need a steep slopes permit application, so you need to file that. Other than that, I have no objection to setting the public hearing and requesting that a draft resolution be prepared for consideration by the board of February fifth.
Terrific, great. So, any questions from board members?
No.
If not, is there a resolution?
Now, the only thing I have to say, this is obviously ongoing and they're working on the field. How are we going to dictate and what conditions will we put in the resolution to make certain these are done in a timely manner?
Well, do you have certain conditions that you want done immediately while they're doing construction?
Not really.
So...
But there's, there'll be some time on that. They already started construction. The only thing I could think of, time is on the table.
I'm listening to you.
Well, prior to a CO.
Maybe prior to a building permit.
Well, they already have, don't they already have a building permit out there?
No, they have.
They just have a grading...
Did you apply for a building permit on that?
We applied for a building permit for the, for the existing home, so you're, I guess the concern is whether or not we take too long to finish up the...
There should be some trigger point on where this should be completed.
Well, we want to continue working.
Bob, what I would suggest is you take a look at the conditions that you want and put them in the hierarchy, which we usually do, of prior to building permit, prior to CO, you know, those type of thresholds.
And we'll discuss that when we do the resolution.
Yeah.
That's all I can figure out, because you already started construction on the roadway.
And we could...
Just thinking that way.
But we could condition it prior to a COO on the building permit he has or any further issuance of additional building permits.
For the other homes.
And if, in the meantime, if you get a BP from Tom on this, just thinking that out loud, because I know you're pretty close to getting that BP. For the one in the back?
For the, for the existing home, the old home. The new home, no, that's going to, we obviously have to have the, all of the work done prior to this new home.
Why don't you communicate the status of the spending application to Tom, so he's aware, maybe he's not going to grant the building permit so fast.
He won't issue the building permit, so they're moving on that.
I had discussion.
Yeah, let's not keep him out of the loop here.
I think he can do that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay. Is there a motion to instruct staff to drop the resolution and to schedule the public hearing for February five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll see you then.
Okay, great. So I'll see you on the public hearing.
Right.
And the work, we can keep going.
I don't know what the nature of the work is that you're doing right now.
Well, like you say, they're in the middle of construction, they're building the roadway, and they put up all the bonds and they've satisfied all the conditions of the people, so they're going to continue working.
And obviously, we'll still comply with all the necessary inspections and so forth.
And all the conditions of the current resolutions.
And, correct.
And given the short timeframe between now and the public hearing, as soon as you can get all the additional information in, get it in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which, again, just to be...
Bob asked for...
So I'm going to give you the revised plan with the additional detail on the wall and then the agreements that we'll do that post-resolution.
That'll be a condition.
Of a condition, right.
Usually, the agreements are a condition.
But you have to get the permit, the steep slopes permit.
The steep slope permit application and the revised...
The fee. Address Bob's comments on the revised plan and I'll get...
It's critical.
Yeah, the structural...
It's only three items. The application, the fee and the revised plan.
Say it that, say it three times, David.
Well, then, maybe he can get it in a week earlier.
If there's only three, right.
Okay, great.
Terrific, great.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
My country man. Former Miami, now it's a restaurant.
Oh, in town, Marius Pizza.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep, good night.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, we move now to our discussion item. This is on the Chapua Performing Arts Center, Chapac. This is the access and boundary review, four hundred and eighty Bedford Road, New York Route one seventeen. We've had a subcommittee that was established. I'm not quite sure how or why, but it was established and Tom and I served on it, have been serving on it, but we've met twice. Lisa Katz is the supervisor on it, Jill Shapiro was there, Bob was there, Sabrina was there, who else was there? Of course, the applicant was there for the first meeting and last night, we had another meeting, so I think...
She took my thumb drive.
Took your, your thumb drive?
Yeah.
Oh.
Coming back with it.
Do you have the thumb drive for Tom?
Oh, was that for that? Oh, I thought about that.
So we'll turn this over to Tom. Tom has been working on some sketches. What I really want to do here was just to bring the planning board up to speed so that you guys knew what we were doing.
Yes, please.
And either like it, disliked it, talked about it, but I didn't want you guys to be in the, in the dark on it, so...
How thoughtful, thank you.
Yes. Sunshine on everything. Bob?
Project...
Sabrina, I, I don't have with me, I don't think, the copy of the, of the two-sided thing that's got the currently proposed boundary.
What did you do with my copy? I gave it to you.
You're really becoming like a American...
I actually have.
I was just thinking the same thing.
It was the eyes, wasn't it? The eyes having...
You want me to pass it round?
Look at she has one right with her.
Yeah, it'd be good to have on the table so that...
Sure, I, I want this back. Let me just write, wait, 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 wait.
Do you want to put your name on it?
Yes.
Do you want to do this?
I have another one.
You have one, but we can...
The original. I don't know if this is going to...
That's fine.
Yeah, you can use my, you need more than one person.
We're not going to, we're not going to touch that, you know?
Yeah, I mean...
You can touch it, no. I invite you to touch it, to draw on it, to do what you want, but you must...
Did your husband touch it?
No, he did not, but you must leave it.
I give you a magic...
I know, yes.
Right all over it.
Put Purell on it.
No, are you kidding me? He's living in a whole separate half of the house.
Then they've done that.
I'm here, I'm here tonight, I'm like, please don't touch the kids. No, my husband says.
Okay.
Ooh, a PowerPoint, Tom, thank you.
Thomas is a mess around.
Entervating portion of our program. But he's half asleep, especially me.
It's nine fifty-five.
Don't tell me.
I'm bad, asleep.
Here, should I do that?
Yeah.
You see the interest on the part of the applicant, right?
It's a good thing this actually doesn't matter.
Yeah, but it matters.
What does anymore that we do up here?
The sinus, this is the EAF.
The file, the file name, it's not reading it properly.
No.
Well, why not?
I don't know.
That's okay.
Go into the, through the file directory, Tom.
I, okay.
Do you want me to do some...
Yes, I do want you to do it.
Okay, let me come help you.
Thank you.
Sorry, you're talking to me wrong. Excuse me, Jim. It's nineteen, it's a pound. No, I don't. I know there's a tree too. Save it under a different... Are you under, which is yours?
It's, that's it.
That one?
That's it.
The cars angling in. Oh, like this?
It's the Wallace.
This scrim here. Okay, let's see.
Actually, there's no file there. It's only four kilobytes. What? You see that? Isn't that like a no-file?
I opened it.
So I have to use this stupid thing.
It's only four, but nothing there.
Is there another Wallace?
No, there's only one. How did it get stripped?
It's repaired.
Let's try.
Nope.
There's no file. I opened it before I left to be sure there was something there. I opened it before I left, to be sure there was something there. I can't believe it.
What's this one? The crop JPEG?
That's a plan. That's just a plan, but put that up. That's the plan we want to look at anyway, forget the PowerPoint.
Okay, so we're gonna table this discussion? Unless you want to gather around the table.
We can gather around the table, yeah.
And you can present your drawings?
Yeah.
Help it out, let me see.
Yeah, come down here.
We're gonna go down to the table because apparently this is not loading.
Oh.
Let me see if I can open up in here.
Unless it's table, I guess.
Unless it's table, oh, okay.
And we can connect you to this, too.
We're now transporting Sabrina's plan to the table.
I'm sorry, guys, I did double-check at four left.
You double-checked this machine, too?
No.
Ah, okay.
We're gonna gather around the table.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just kinda moving my stuff so we can move it.
I gotta move this up here.
For a rapid.
Don't forget your packet.
Oh, the packets.
Well, maybe we don't need this if we're all gonna gather around one, one week plan.
Dennis, are those the packets for February 5?
Yeah, but they might include information that will be taken off the agenda.
Bob, could you bring that down?
Yeah, I will, I will. Tom, you want your coffee?
Um, just so you don't feel like you're crazy, man, you'll be fine on this. So.
Yeah, I suspect it won't be. You're wasting time. After you and.
I got it here.
I will keep you apprised of that, but you may have extra stuff.
Yeah, so it's, that's it. That's gonna be a very interesting conversation when you have it.
You got it there, or do you have an HDMI?
Oh, did it open up?
Yeah, I got it here. I do, this does not have HDMI, it just has a USB, but I can do wireless to hook up to something.
But you have to put the click share in, don't you?
Yeah, you gotta load a program onto your computer. Let me try one more time.
I don't care, load it, get me on, I just don't.
It's spacey.
I don't know where you get it.
Or just wanna stand around the table with my time.
Do you think I know? My idea ability goes as far as this room.
Well, the people at home can't see it. All right. For the video, nobody at home can see it.
Right, just background stuff anyway.
I mean, we could try, I'll try to open it on this computer.
Nah, it's okay.
Don't worry about it.
Can I sit?
Need more chairs?
Maybe more.
Yeah, I can make it every day, thick. Battery doesn't roll.
Here, you guys should sit, I have some time.
Nah, it's okay, I'm sitting in the corner, thanks.
Even Sinex at Tom's, Jill?
Beginning?
I guess you've seen it before. Yeah, well.
And I think you just, there you go.
Okay, this is like, because it's so small, but.
It's all I can fit back, please, sir.
You know what, this is silly, so let's just put this aside. I'll just describe it. So, a couple things, a couple objectives here.
I'm sorry.
A couple objectives we need this group that I found out I was part of that day, when I was in the room. The notion was to put together the material that the town needed in order to understand what the boundaries of the parcel should be for the Wallace Auditorium, and also in order to establish what, to try and come up with a list of things that the town was going to ask the applicant, not the applicant of the residential portion, but the applicant of Felix, to do in the interest of making this a better, better functioning auditorium. It's not really not an interim anymore, it's a performing arts center. And to do the site improvements onsite and offsite that would make it, give it a better home in the community. And so, these, this particular drawing, there are a couple of drawings that were done. We had an earlier meeting to talk about the two drawings, and essentially got merged into one idea, which is a drawing that I have here that I'm gonna show you. But the issues are how to locate this building in the overall context of the existing property. And right now, it really feels like it's divorced from the property, it feels like it's an orphan. And originally, I think, when the building was built, in its context, it probably felt a lot better connected than it does now. I can't predict that, but I do believe that there is a, was a reason for the building to be sited here in the way it was sited. And that becomes apparent when you're there, and when you look at the, if you look at the Google Earth of this property, you'll see that, you'll notice that the center line of this building, the alignment of the center line of this building goes right to the cupola on the 400 building. So, there is a planned relationship between the two. This building refers to that one. And there is also a topographic relationship to the two. That's low, and this is high. This is built up on the ridge line, this is sort of the top of the property here. And that's sort of classic, I mean, that's sort of classic, classical planning. You could take the Acropolis, you know, with the Parthenon on the top. That makes this building, locates this building in a way that makes it very, very special, the property, for a special use. So, those two things, I thought, were pretty helpful in trying to figure out how to solve this problem, how to meet the objectives of doing all this. So, one of the, one of the strategies would be to find a way to reveal the building, because right now, there are all these tall trees everywhere, there, what's happened over time is there are trees that have gotten in the way that obscure the building. And there are also, there's some landscaping in here, which just seems to be inappropriate to that, to that purpose. Right now, it feels like it's a separate building, which is up here, and when you come down the road this way, you don't even know it's there until finally you get to a point where you can see it, and by then, you've almost gone past it. So, one of the objectives is to find a way to reestablish a relationship down there, which will help, I think, to the cupola, which I think will also help establish a relationship between the building and everything else that's going on down here. And to give it more visibility from this approach to the building. Secondly, there needs to be a way to actually connect, better connect the parking to the building. This is at elevation about 404 down here, and you can't really see it, this is the berm that's there. On this drawing, the first parking space is back here.
Tom, in their full build master plan, this is the final solution, it's parking? In their full build?
In their, well, their full build master plan never, who's full build?
The applicant's. I mean, I'm just like.
The office park, that is parking.
This is parking, so full build, there's just a, it's a relationship as a building with a parking in front of it.
That's it, right? The full build actually was essentially, in their, their, their plan, was parking building.
Okay.
For the, for the offices. And this building just happened to be here, and originally, they were gonna demolish it anyway. I don't think there was ever any, that I heard of or I've seen in any drawing, there was any purposeful design that linked the parking to this building.
Right, okay.
And the fact that the berm is there now is an indication that, I don't know if purposely or not, but this has been even more orphaned from the parking.
Yeah, I would. This road just cuts us off.
Originally, I would think, when they wanted to have a special meeting of staff, they would all walk there. So, they already would have been parked, and so the parking may not have been as much of an issue.
And it might have been for guests coming for.
Lectures.
You know, corporations bring in their, their staff from, you know, from around the country. I'd really be interested to know more about the history of this. It looks to me like it was built in the 30s, I don't know.
The use, from, I know people who worked there, the use was a lecture hall.
A lecture hall.
It was a lecture hall. The Wallaces were very connected in the arts community, their business was essentially journalism, they would have lectures of different people come.
Educational stuff.
Correct, it was educational and lecture, it was not performance whatsoever.
Oh, no.
You guys, if any of you haven't been there to see a performance, it's really wonderful. But it's an auditorium, it's not a performance hall, and that's one of the things that Lisa was talking about, we'll get to that in a second. So, so, one of the problems we need to solve in getting this better connected with the site is to get it better connected with its partner. And this is an obstacle to it. So, one of the design opportunities here is to actually look at this whole area as part of the design of this also, just sort of link the two. And see if there's a way to make this feel like it's the auditorium. I think we can relocate that road, but you can't. Right?
Make this like a space.
Yeah, make, make this from here to here, how about here to here?
Agreed, yes. That's what I love, if that could have happened. That way, it's absorbed, and you're not crossing it, and then they can have outdoor functions that can have a relationship with it.
Excellent, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I guess in hindsight, if it was all designed in from the get-go.
It was being demolished.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just saying, it's all hindsight.
You can see the berm here, it's in shadow because the sun's on the other side, but you can't even see the first of the parking. Their proposal was just to go ahead and cut through, cut through the berm with a walkway, which just, I think, is inadequate to what the objectives are. So.
It was the berm just burying excess material in the field?
Absolutely.
Is that the whole reason for the berm? Only reason I could think of.
There is no practical utility to the berm.
We've seen that actually excavate the trees in there. It's not exactly clean soil either, so it's whatever's left on the side.
It's from the side, it's from the side.
It's burying.
Ex槽ated material. Dandy.
So.
They're gonna remove it.
So, that's a design, that's a design opportunity that I think we can just go ahead and take advantage of if we want to. The other problem. The other problem is the, is the handicap parking, that there's really no place to park the handicap. There was the earlier proposal to build this driveway here, degrade it, and put handicap parking up here, associated with what is existing right now as the service area to the building. It's actually, it's actually just an asphalt pad with a couple of double doors that go into the building, there's no loading dock, there's nothing special about it, it's just asphalt.
It's really an exit, right?
And it's, it's actually a legal exit.
Yep.
From the auditorium. And they're using it, because there's no way to get into the stage, the wings of the building, from the outside directly. The door is actually here, and what they do is they bring stuff in here, in front of the stage, and then up onto the stage. This is not, again, it's not a performance, a performance hall, it's an auditorium, so there are no wings, there's really no accommodation for all the, you know, wardrobe, anything. It's just a hall, essentially. So, it's interesting that this, the architecture of this here is identical over here. So, whatever is serving now as an entrance for service could also be over here. And so, the thought was that in order to get here, we're either, to stay here, we're either creating this cut on this side of the building, or we're coming in the back here, if we don't want to do that, we're coming in the back here across all these infiltration structures here, which can be done, but, you know, if you don't have to do it, why do it? It's just asking for, you know, problems. So.
And this is, this is more of a secondary street, so coming in here is kind of more of a residential, opposed to this.
Yeah, that's the Toll Brothers, that's one of their residential driveway things.
Oh, this is, this is that loop that goes around.
Townhouse is here.
So, this is run by secondary street.
Pretty good drop-off, too.
Yeah, there's an elevation change.
See, you're not doing that.
So, if you, if you go there and you, and you look at, and you look at the grades on this side of the building, it's actually a fairly easy way to, easy, you don't really have to do any grading, really, to get from here. Up to here.
Pathway.
It's an existing driveway to the Secret Service headquarters right here. So, that actually seems to work, and if it's true that, that you can easily, as easily do this over here, why do anything over there? Just come in here and put handicap parking on this side, next to the building, and then do your service off of that same roadway.
Would your trucks come and load up this road to bring equipment or whatever, for whatever kind of presentation is going on in the auditorium?
Yes, they would, or why not just take this road all the way through?
So, they could come?
They would come.
Because if you have parking here, would you block the truck?
Well, emergency access at a minimal.
Oh, there's no, there's, there wouldn't, the truck would not be blocking anything, right? And we're talking about trucks, we're not talking about, you know, delivery, we're just talking, they just come in for a show, and then they go, and that happens, you know, once a week or something. So, the notion was, it just looks like it's easier to do it here than it is to do there. The concern then is, not our concern, but a concern is, well, it's our concern, because we have to be, we obviously need to be.
Team players.
Fair to the applicants, absolutely. The concern is that, the consequences are that if we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do it properly, that there are some things in this, in the proposed plan that need to be dealt with.
What's this distance here?
Right now, 22, more or less. I know it's weak.
We measured it out last night.
Sabrina, I looked at this time and time again, that's existing.
We've been working on this for a very long time.
So, but now's the time for us to have that conversation with the applicant, and be sure that we've done our due diligence to do the, what we think is prudent for the purpose, the public purpose here, which is this auditorium. And one of the public purposes here, one of the, is to, is to do, be diligent about what the future of this building might be. Right now, it's inadequate to its purpose because of the nature of the architecture of the building, it's an auditorium, it's not a performance hall. And Lisa has said that they have performers who come in every once in a while, look at the hall and say, I'm sorry, I can't do this, because I just, it's just not, it's not gonna work. So, her, one of her objectives is to be sure that there is enough room here, not to increase the hall itself, because you, you can't increase the size of a rate floor auditorium with the stage without essentially building, essentially building another building. You'd have to do so much of this thing, you'd really, pretty much have to, these things are purpose-built. But she doesn't think that it's important to get more seats, she just thinks it's more important to get back a house, to get better circulation, to get wings that work, and to get circulation and parking, and to get a site which.
Storage, a lot of storage.
Can that be done over here? Which allows you to continue with that thought?
Oh, well, just wait.
Just wait, he has the.
Oh, that's what these are, okay.
Yeah.
So, those are, those are the. Do you need this, can I move this?
No, you can't.
Okay.
It's getting late, folks.
It's getting late. So, this is the original drawing of the.
Get it, Richard, it's right here, please.
And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna turn this this way. And you can put that microphone right at the end of the drawing to hold it in place. Move this over so that. Put a peek at it. So. Let's go back to sort of the.
Separate circulation of the parking.
The main objectives, right? Find a way to open this up and to get it, to get it on axis to the cupola building here, which means really taking out all the landscape which is in here. And there's no landscape design in this, obviously, but design it to that purpose, and that's somebody else's job. But I think that what we want to do is to be aggressive about just taking the space and doing that in order to make that work. Take this space over here, and on axis, on that axis, create a landing point here, grade this out so it's essentially flat. This is 404, get to 406 here, and have some special parking here, maybe this is even more handicap parking, but get some close-in parking here with a couple of purpose, of purpose-designed steps up to a plaza with a ramp to get up there. A crosswalk, which then is actually special paving, which is maybe the same paving as paving in the plaza, so you've claimed the street as well. And if you do the, the street lamps properly, you can actually make this part of this whole thing, if you do, if you do it right, it's not that difficult to do, as you know. Then what you do in this, just to be, get down to detail for a second, what you want to do is, is there is a grade change here, go ahead and put a berm down there, landscape it so people aren't trying to come up here and cross here. It gets everybody from this area to get to this point in order to cross. You come across to a, a lower plaza, which is part of all of this, which is at 409, the road's at about 408, 409, right here. So, you're essentially level coming to here, and then you come to steps that get you up to about 415. At this point, from this plaza, there is also a handicap ramp to get you up there. Now, the handicapped are actually gonna be parking over here, this is their official parking, this is where they're, they're zoned for it. But that doesn't mean that there aren't people who, in the community, who aren't handicapped officially, legally, who still are better off using ramps. You know, I'm gonna be there pretty soon, and so are all of you.
No, 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 just you and I, chief. Everybody else has got hope.
Well, if we keep going, maybe tonight.
So, so this is, so, so, and this will all be landscaped out, there is this, do we have that?
Yeah, that picture is unbelievable.
There is, Con Ed came in and put this, this box, utility box, this green box.
Statuary, beautiful.
Which is right in it. And it's got Lisa quite upset, and legitimately so, as me upset, too.
Oh, like recently they did that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's brand new.
That's more brand smackin' new.
It was on your plan. It was in a utility.
They got Felix's approval, they must have.
Yeah, I don't know how I say dare do it.
They got Felix's approval.
They did not go to you.
There never was shown on the development plans.
And one day it was there, one day it was there, and there it is. So, one of the things we need to deal with, and it's not difficult to deal with, but we need to find a way to make that sort of go away. Lisa's notion was that she wants to have a, a electronic event sign, you know, like you, you know, lights and. She would like to have two of them, one which would be here, facing the parking lot, and the other one facing the road as you approach. And there's a way, you just have to design it, put it on a wall, wall's high enough, so this thing is behind it, there's enough clearance between the back of the wall and this box.
The one down here.
Just like we have in town, when we just.
Or move the box onto one of those home lots.
Stuff to move now.
It's already, it's too late.
It's wired, connected.
Never too late, you just have to, if you had to say, I want it moved, and plan on two years before it happens.
So, that, so that sort of addresses that objective. The other objective is to get parking up here for the handicapped, and again, this is a pretty, pretty gentle slope to get up here. Bob looked at this, we can get up here, I think, without too much trouble, to get close enough to 415 so that you can have parking here. The request was for 10 handicap spaces, so there are these here.
Let me just ask you something, you have 415, 414, 413. I know on steeper slopes, if you're on the wrong side of the slope and trying to open the door, it's a struggle.
This is not, this is.
This is pretty flat.
Okay, I just.
Maximum grade recommended in a parking lot is five, well below five, but we like two.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, that's a good question. And so, and so as described earlier, this just keeps going, you come out the other side. This is where that, where the pad would be to get to that door. What you see crosshatched there is the, again, this is not program space, nobody has said, done a definitive notion of exactly how big this projected box would be for expansion. It's just a guess at this point.
Place to start.
But it's a place to start in order for us to get to a point where we're comfortable with the overall size of the property, where these things are, and where this parcel line ends up as a consequence.
Is that the new, the latest parcel line that's 67 or 80 feet?
72.
75.
75.
75 feet.
75 from the face of this wing to there. Now, the consequences of that, what's?
Wait, what was it before, though? 22. 22. So, okay.
Well, you can actually put this over the other one, but let me.
It's a little bit of a move.
Yeah, well, it's, it's so much of a move that we're in the, these units.
And is this their detention?
That's the storm warders, two of them.
Two rain gardens.
There are two rain gardens here, this, this is actually drawn incorrectly, forget that, this actually stops here. So, the notion was that if we, if, if we're here, these units, probably, there is some concern, I think Lisa believes these units are not well-sighted anyway, because they're too close to, to the, to the activity of the, of the performance.
And also, I think, unless maybe you can recall, Lisa seems to also believe that And also, I think, unless maybe you can recall, Lisa seems to also believe that in the preliminary approval, those weren't there.
I don't recall.
There was, they were, they weren't there in the current configuration, she's a hundred percent right. This area, it was a different configuration, the PDCP, and they were not as close as these are.
In the original one, the way it worked, 'cause I did that drawing years ago, and they, they pretty much followed it at the time, I, as I recall, these units actually faced the street.
Correct.
And there were makeup units, not all of them faced the street, and there were makeup units down at the end, that's what I remember. I have to go find that drawing, but it's in the PDCP document anyway.
I can tell you, your recollection.
Yeah, then they turned them.
They were turned.
They turned them here because of grading.
Right, they, they turned them this way, they were originally.
Yes, that's what they said to us.
Well.
Rotated.
Yes, they did.
But the summary of, of asks and upset that you get with Toll Brothers is they do not want this at all. We'd asked them before, they don't want anything on the ring road. Obviously, they'd have to move those units or lose the units, and then they've gotta reconfigure and figure the stormwater.
The two rain gardens.
With Bob and engineering, so, you know, those are the issues that we, those are the pushbacks that we're going to encounter, and the thinking was of the committee was that now's the time where you don't really ask, you basically say, "This is the way it has to be," because you're asking so many other things, and this is what we need.
Yeah, their list of other things that.
Yes, well, those are, yeah, almost like fittings, I guess, right, the other things on the building itself.
So when we have conversations about how long it's gonna take to get to wherever we, we end up, this is the kind of conversation that needs to happen, like, right away, because there are, there are, I'm sure there're gonna be feedback, feedback loops on this, and the sooner I think we address this, the sooner we come to a conclusion and.
The expectation was that you guys would give feedback to Tom on this plan, if there were any changes or substantive things you wanted to raise, and then Tom would make the changes, and we'd bring it back to the committee, and then it would also have to go back to the town board. But the, the Lisa, who is representing the town board, definitively wanted the planning board's input on this before it went back to the town board, and then it would be delivered to the, to Felix.
Does this property line change back here?
No.
That was stays.
How is it right where your fingers are?
The further one. We have a lodging property on that side.
So really, the only line we don't, we pushed out this way?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is this one of these electronic signs, or is it something else?
Well, no, see, here's, here's something else about this, which I think is, is important. I think that this is, this is not just a facility for people who live off-site, I think that this is going to be an attractive facility for people who live in the neighborhood.
Absolutely, have your built-in entertainment.
I think it adds value to the property and the value to the neighborhood.
Kind of like a community center?
Yep.
And so, as a consequence, not only is this a road to get in, this also becomes, if we landscape it right, you put a sign here saying chapac, chapack, and this becomes a walkway with trees, so on and so forth, for people to come into the site and go.
So this is a tasteful little sign, not a.
No, this is not a tasteful.
Sorry, this one's gonna have bright lights on it, I'm sorry, this one's gonna have bright lights on it, but this is just gonna be a.
I mean, to quell.
Neighborhood scale.
Wayfinding sign.
To help quell some.
It's a nice color, sort of like, you know, batty eyes, you know.
So since we know Toll.
Neighborhood scale.
Have an issue with the curb cut, right?
Neighborhood scale.
Where's me, too?
Is there, if we had a, still have the pedestrian connection, is there any way we can make this work with the in and out coming here?
Oh, I don't, I, I, I actually don't think, from my perspective, for the site to work, because feeding this, this, this building is not a lot of truck traffic.
Not a lot of truck traffic at all, I agree with you.
It's really nothing.
I'm just thinking if you.
No, I hear you, so.
He said they have an issue, they may have an issue.
No, I hear you, so.
We have like an emergency access.
You could put a hammerhead here and cut it off.
We can put breakaways.
And you could put for fire access, you could do.
I think they would settle with that, where it's not used all the time.
They just don't want the traffic.
Yeah, they don't want the traffic, it's not as exclusive.
But you can have, you can have breakaways with a difference, this is the loop road over here, and this is one of their access streets.
That's the main road.
That's their main road.
It's their main road.
This is the loop road over here.
No, this is the other big road, which is the wood road.
Okay, this, this buffer over here would be treated and everything, so light, there's no light spillage and all that stuff, and noise protection, too.
So Tom, do you think we could get like an outdoor space here now? That's what I was asking about the property line.
Slope, though, steep slope.
Like if they wanna have an outdoor space to, to do something?
But if you have homes over here.
Like cocktails.
The front.
We, oh, we still have out here?
There's a huge grade change.
Over here, yes.
On that side, yes.
But over here, does this work for an outdoor space if they wanna do a gala and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, it's all, you know, the slates are choppy and everything else.
It needs to be done.
Obviously, it's just, this is what it needs, it needs an outdoor space.
With the stormwater, we're trying to have some sort of balance with the.
But they've got, you've got outdoor activities right in the middle of the residential area, when you have parties out there and galas out there, you've got a lot of noise, and not everybody in the immediate vicinity is gonna appreciate summer parties at the walls, at the chapack.
Well, granted, well, but that's, but I have a solution for that, what a lot of swim clubs used to do, is you, you give reduced tickets to the shows to the people that live next door, and they get.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea.
My word.
And there's four that have to move.
But are there comments, though, in terms of what we see here in terms of, I mean, just the concept?
So what happened on the other side, where currently that, that road is, so it's just landscaped to?
It's basically lawn right now.
Make a grade out of it and utilize it.
But it doesn't turn into another area or another, or something like that.
So where's that list again?
I think you need to focus on, conceptually, how you view the property as the most productive as a performance center. Recognizing that it, in its iteration, is going to interfere with some portions of a proposed development. And I think that's pretty much as far as a planning board should be going on this. The discussion of how the vision that you're presenting interacts with their proposed development is something that has to be very carefully dealt with in order to maintain town's objectivity in connection with the review of the site plan application. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind as we go forward.
So I don't quite understand that, does that mean you, if you provide something conceptual, it would be without a drawing, or?
No, no, I'm just saying, but what it is, is the planning board's conception of the most productive use of the site in connection with how the property line should be demarcated.
Okay, so, and recognize that, you know, there's, would be some, some going on to the other property, but on the other hand, as Tom said, this could be something that enhances the value of the entire parcel.
That's fine, I'm just, but it has to be presented as a conceptual view from the planning board, and then understanding the planning board presently has a site plan application for it that would be affected by this. Right. And this would be a conceptual change in the subdivision a lot more.
Right. Does the planning board legitimately represent to this level of detail the town's interest on, in the, in the face of an application that's in front of us, are we?
Stepping on our toes?
Are we asserting an interest which is inappropriate?
Well, I'm trying to keep you within limits, is what I'm suggesting, without going into a public discussion of it, I'm happy to have a, a vice of counsel on that, if appropriate.
So let's, let's, this is where I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, where I think we're supposed to go with this, you guys look at it, right, you and I are representatives of members of that committee, nobody's voting on anything, it's just a look-see, right, and then we take it back, the committee takes it back to, takes it to the town board for the first time as a committee, I don't know whether they call it a recommendation, or?
It's a recommendation for the boundary.
For the boundary.
For the boundary.
What about this?
And for other improvements that are affected by the boundary. You have to understand, the, the, the committee, a member of the committee is the owner of the site. And his directive to the committee was, "Show me the boundary that you want and other things that you think would help answer a lot of the stopgaps right now in relation to handicap access, the berm, let me know what you want, and I will try and accommodate."
My only other thought is, I like where you started to go with the parking, but I'm wondering, can you, can you build up, you know, park some of that junk that they, they have and put pavement on top of it, and then slope the parking down, you know, more gradually than, for a longer distance even, so maybe under the whole aisle and on both sides.
Well, what's there now is, is this berm is here, and Tom has drawn this with parking here, that does not exist right now.
Right.
This is where the parking line is, so this, this berm actually goes.
Pretty well all the way to here.
Yeah.
So it's very substantial, so what Tom has drawn here is, put some extra space in there.
I totally agree, but I think there should be more space in that the, you know, because then you still have a drop-off you have to deal with, maybe that's outside of the perspective here, and I'm acting like an engineer, but, but one of the issues we have is too much fill on the site.
Yes.
No, but that's not our issue.
Well.
They will have to remove this fill.
Well, yeah, that's their issue, but it interferes with what we'd like to, you know, see happen, in my mind, anyway, 'cause, you know, if some of it can be, the cleaner part be put there, maybe there's more interest in, a little bit more interest in.
Is that getting too detailed for our purpose, just to?
Possibly.
Recommendation to the subcommittee.
Hey, I'm an engineer and I'm trying to think as big as I can, and that's as far as it goes.
I'm just trying to understand, make sure I understand legal properly, are we just, are, is our, is our ask as a planning board to look at this and say, "Oh, in concept, we think this."
We support this.
Okay.
And then we can get into the nitty-gritty, I guess, if it gets a thumbs up, then we can start designing.
Presents it to you.
Right, when it gets presented to us, then we can get into the nitty-gritty of the details.
Well, we don't wanna go too far in the nitty-gritty of the details, ever, ever.
Yeah, I follow.
Well, when it comes back as a, a site plan application.
There's nothing we'll come back to this site.
It's gonna come back, two ways, it's gonna come back as both, potentially.
And we could, you know, we could say, you know, as a, as a line in the description of everything.
If you're gonna change there, lot, the number of units and the configuration and locations is gonna be part of the site plan.
But not, that won't affect the parking lot.
No, no, I'm talking about this whole thing ultimately, we have notifications for both the subdivision and the site.
Correct, yes, there will definitely be implications.
Yeah.
The radiation and all that stuff.
Yes.
Just a thought.
No, it's key to that.
If we have this kind of, you know, slope for the berm, if we did this, you know, allowed them to do that.
Right.
And taper it more than, it would make it more attractive than everybody climbing up all the steps.
This discussion is clearly in the spirit of what Sabrina said was the ask from a member of the committee and the owner of the property, it's fine, it's conceptual.
Who owns the property?
I don't need a name.
Summit Greenfield.
Summit Greenfield, okay, the owner.
The owner.
Toll's contract, Vendi.
Summit.
Yes, yes, okay.
Summit Grossman.
Whatever it is.
Summit Grossman.
Have they changed?
Yes, changed.
So there's one more thing that's not on the drawing, 'cause it's, it's way down there, which is that once you, once you pass, right now, once you pass this building, I mean, there's no coming back, you have to go all the way down, all the way around, find your way back up again, there's no return loop. And there is a place where this, this loop road actually gets to be just about level with the parking, this parking lot, and another ask would be to make a connection. So when, this is a drop, intended to be a drop-off area, so when you drop somebody off, you can go down here and get the parking lot without having to go.
Around the whole project, the whole.
So there's a parking, so there's a parking lot aspect of this that has to be thought
out to be consistent and everything, to make it the wonderful thing that it can be.
That's exactly right. Right, 'cause right now, it's, it's just a big parking lot for the building which is way over there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And that's a wok, but.
Okay. Yeah, good job.
So if, anything? Bob and I have been over, and he, he, he got me straight on all the grades, so.
We checked the grades, make sure they work, we don't wanna give them something that doesn't work.
Well, because then they say you're stupid and everything else.
Reverse rolls on.
Yeah, yeah. We don't like that.
Yeah, it would be helpful.
Because, because honestly, to put this on a plan and to show the parking lot connection physically, I think is very important.
No, I know, I completely agree, and I just didn't, I intended to do all that, I didn't have time because.
Suggestion.
Is it possible for Terry to do that?
Parking lot.
The, this plan on, on plan with the parking lot.
Well, another way that, can you use an inset?
Well, again, why, I think we can figure out with.
Yeah, if you do an inset, easy.
You can also do an overlay. I was gonna do all that, but I had real problems trying to open the files.
I couldn't help it.
So I was running to.
Questions they ask.
It goes, their, their scanner broke.
You can open the PDF. Because I tried to call you.
It wasn't.
And then the phones didn't work.
Yeah, I tried to call you.
How can we do this most efficiently? Let's talk after how we can do this most efficiently.
Well, when, when does Lisa wanna see?
They have to come back.
When does she wanna get to the town board on this? That's the presentation.
She's gonna wanna get to it before next Tuesday.
Yeah, she definitely wants to see it right away.
Yeah, she can see this and the presentation we can work on in the meantime, she can see this anytime.
No, I understand.
But Tuesday, Tuesday's the date to get the, to get the presentation.
Why can't I just send her the PDF, it's the same as this, right?
Can she open it?
I told you.
No, I don't think it's you, I think it's, I think it was me, it's my machine.
But, but my, my.
Now, we said that sometimes there's problems with that.
My, so the maps, the original map, was something that, you know, we would mark up, draw on it, whatever, and the applicant would submit it back with their version of what they'd want, and we'd have to measure it out and compare it to what we submitted, and how far did they go, how far did we go? I'm hoping that this time, this is a little bit different, because we've been, you know, the, the owner of the property has taken responsibility for this next go-around, whereas previously, the owner did not really take responsibility for it. So I wanna give him the, the plan that includes the entirety of what we're talking about, and that parking lot connection is important to create the circulation that we're looking for to remove the berm, so the sooner we can have that in, that plan, if you will, in a, in a visual format that includes the entirety, I think, the better. I think Lisa is interested in, in ensuring that her concerns about the potential future expansions and the handicap parking, that there's enough room, as we discussed conceptually in the, in the committee meeting, so she needs to take that back to the town board. The town board will next meet on next Tuesday, they typically like submission items the Friday before their meetings, like you do, but that's, that's a huge time commitment, and I'm thinking any way the town can be of assistance to you, Tom.
Thank you. It's, I, I, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I actually think that it's, that it's, if I could just open the files, it's actually not that much work, but I'll be working with Bob to be sure I have the right drawings.
I can have Terry call, because he says he's known of some instances, again, where you try to open up with a Macintosh, it doesn't work with PDFs, or maybe there's another type of system you can put it in.
Well, I open up PDFs all the, and I could open up the PDF.
I sent you the PDF again, you couldn't open it.
This is detailed, nobody needs to listen to.
Why not? I know.
But I could open up the PDF. So the question that I would have for the document that goes to, comes, the next one we do, is that there, there are some implications about asks, like this. Is that appropriate to do at this point? Is it better to take their plan?
It almost is the one.
And do a cutout, right? Essentially, just cut this out and put it in their plan. And then have a separate conversation about what happens here. Or do we want to, do we want to talk about moving these units now?
Yeah, I think we should, because the property owner actually asked us, and I think he specifically asked you to find the spot, just relocate it, show him on the property.
No, no, we can't do that.
Yeah, we're starting to over, okay? We, going back to our history on the retail part, we kind of didn't want to go over the top in terms of designing the project for.
I, I think it is helpful for the owner to understand what we are ta, what we are asking for in relation to the current plan.
Well, we, the implications of, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
The other thing is that the implications of it are pretty obvious, that a couple of these units, if this is the parcel line, a couple of these units would have to be relocated.
Yeah, and that's sufficient, so point that out, and they'll have to deal with it.
Correct.
And, and the detention basis need to be moved, and it would be sort of obvious without us having to do any drawing on this side of the line.
I would say you do not want to do any drawing on their property.
No, you, right, you do not want to revise their drawing.
Correct.
We can do some drawing over here in the parking lot, hopefully the berm.
We have been asked, because that is an issue that we.
He asked us to tell them.
Correct. How to deal with that.
Yeah.
And how to deal with that.